Go ahead and open up to you, we'll go on to our next item which is regular public comment period, and Mayor Kelly Linville would like to have, provide a brief update before we begin our regular public comment period.
Thank you President Hamel, and this is just an update including what I mentioned to the council this afternoon. The, I'll give you the, a little bit of the synopsis and add a couple of things that we hadn't talked about this afternoon. First of all, the Lighthouse Mission and Fountain Community Church, Winter Haven, and the, the library are all providing different levels of service at different times. So, I feel like we have a variety of options for those of our residents that are unsheltered, and we still have some capacity in those beds. I'd like to add that Fountain Community, I mean, Winter Haven has purchased vouchers and has put their, their Winter Haven residents, which is what our agreement with them covers into hotels which we appreciate. It's very cold out there. And also they secured the use of a church which is out in the county, and according to some volunteers have had between 10 and 18 people there in the, in the evening. So, I think everybody's trying to do their part. The, I wanted to remind everyone that no one is turned away from the Lighthouse Mission unless they have a history of violence in the mission, and so the barriers have been even lower than they were before, and it's coordinated through the drop-in center. Our library has been open now since Thursday during the day for women from the Fountain Community Church. It's been going very well, though there is some fatigue from the volunteers that have been working 11 hours straight, and we are working on that to find potentially some relief so people can get some sleep, which we need to do. The shelters will be in place for as long as needed. We understand that we can't predict the weather, so we don't know when the weather might get better or not, but we still need shelter. So, let's see, we are working on a contingency plan because at some point in time, the beds that are available right now may not be available depending on how long the severe weather goes on. So, we have engaged the Office of Emergency Management. Lynn was here this afternoon to explain some of the things that she's doing. She was on the phone in my office today trying to find those extra volunteers. I also talked to Mike Parker from the Homeless Service Center about potentially finding some volunteers there to give relief at the library. And, the, long-term is something that April had made a motion that we'd like to talk about longer, so we're ready for next, for the next step. It's not going to be just winter, it's going to be, you know, what do we do when the drop-in center is not, no longer able to provide the, the shelter that they're providing now? And there have been some very good ideas that have come forward that we hope to flesh out and share with Lighthouse Mission, other parties, and the council, so that you have a better idea of what your options could be. We have a commitment from the county and the port now, we worked on last week, to have a potential another location for tent encampment. And, we also talked to WTA today to see if there was any ability to coordinate some bus use, use, even if it was just like a warming center, if in fact the, the weather gets too cold. We could probably find something else to open up. What we can't find is staff, to staff it. And so that's what Lynn's working on now, to come up with the staff that would be, be able to staff another facility if in fact we, we don't have enough beds in the ones we have. So, I feel like everyone is working in good faith. I appreciate the council's being, oh, and Jack did text me today and said that they've written a $15,000 check to the Opportunity Council for the 147 or 127 new vouchers. So, that's taken care of. I had an offer to step in if in fact there was a gap in funding, but if we decide to give any more voucher money then, then we'll be in contact with the, with the Opportunity Council who does that. And, what was the other thing I was going to say? Oh, I don't remember. And I don't know if you have any questions for me, but I think it's important to know that we're, we're, we're all, all of us in our commu-, oh, the shelter, the day shelter for the teens at the Congregational Church, they had their grand opening yesterday, and I went to that and people are so excited, and that was a self, kind of a self-starting thing where they just want to do it, and got a lot of community support and did it. And, I think that people are very excited about that. So, that's all I think I have to report.
Okay. Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Barker.
Just to tag onto that, I got a email from Pete Stark from the WTA, just so folks are aware that the WTA is providing free rides to the shelter, allowing people to stay on the bus and just ride as long as they follow the rules of conduct. Extended lobby hours at the downtown station, and opening earlier and closing later. Parked a warming bus at, at Cordada Station where there's no indoor lobby, and they're staying in touch with the mission as to shelter locations and status so that we can pass this information on to others.
Thank you Councilmember Barker.
And I want to thank April for adding, adding that because Pete told me that today, and I'm sorry. Vanessa was going to put it out on social media so people knew. And I don't know if I finished thanking you for the emergency proclamation. It was a requirement from the county if we were going to use our, our emergency management staff, so now that's signed and, and to the county, so we're, we're covered on that.
Great. All right, and we'll, so we'll begin the public comment period. Elizabeth Oaks will read the first three names on the list.
First three signed up are Bridget Reeves, Teresa Muers, and Autumn Lynn.
And if folks could just line up as your names are called right over behind the podium, that'd be great.
Bridget Reeves with the Lighthouse Mission Ministries. So, it's been a rough week. About one week ago today, the sewer main at the drop-in center was found to be collapsed. During the first significant cold weather snap this winter, we have had no water at the drop-in center. Construction to fix the pipe has been pushed back to Wednesday from today, but we're grateful for the, the timing and the permitting and all that goes into that. We have had extra people coming into us for services over the last week. We have had unprecedented interest from the community, inquiring about numbers and capacity at all hours of the day and night. We've been stretched thin trying to provide needed services in our community and we've been dealing with the spread of a lot of misinformation. Needless to say, it has been tiring. I wish it could be said that the tiredness was all for the right reasons, but unfortunately some of the tiredness is coming from things that seem unrelated to directly providing the vital services to the people in need. In the midst of all of this, there have been some bright points. So, SSC stepped up and brought porta-potties to us even on late notice last Monday afternoon. They have also cleaned them more routinely and came by around 7:00 AM this morning after multiple calls over the weekend from staff that there was a need over the weekend. We are so grateful for their service. We're grateful for the many, many volunteers that have helped at Fountain Community Church. They have flexed with us when we said we needed shelter for men there as well, and they have picked women up in two locations as needed in the evening. We are grateful to the City of Bellingham and the Bellingham Public Library for coordinating and hosting the Emergency Day Center for Women coming from FCC. We're grateful for the donors, other service providers, and so many others that have reached out to lend their support and encouragement during the last week. We're grateful to the many men and women in our services that do their part, making LMM a safe place to stay as well. And we're grateful for our Street Connect vans, whom have flexed their hours to meet people at their decision-making moment for shelter in the evenings and bring them there. We want to seek common ground as things go forward. There's been so much misinformation this last week, and we honestly don't have the time, nor is this necessarily the place to dig into each and every piece. We now have a central line of communication through our executive director so as to not add misinformation or confusion, confusion to an already difficult situation. We implore you, council members, and the public to continue efforts towards safe housing for all. We ask that you keep the main thing, the main thing. Think of the 176 to 182 people just at the mission, not counting at the other shelters in the community that were housed the last few nights. And we have space for more. I was there during check-in last night. Thank you. You've been a part of making this a safe place, a reality in our community, and I invite you to stay committed to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Muers, speaking as a private citizen. Wow, what a great community we have. I've been hearing and reading all about people making donations of their time and their money to ensure that our vulnerable and people experiencing homelessness are safe, clothed, fed, and sheltered. Thank you to all of the community partners and awesome community members. This reminded me of the 14 years that I spent with the Hope House Street Outreach, in the winters that we went out trekking through the snow into camps, and Cornwall Church and their, and their salt on the street, the 15 years or so that they did the same thing. None of us asked to be paid for it or reimbursed. I'm really glad to see that there are other community members now stepping up and doing the same thing. From our experience, we advocated and worked, and worked with other partners to get an outreach team in the city, to get a supportive housing program in the city like Francis Place. It takes time and to being consistent and respectful advocacy. It works. Disrespectful, angry, foul-mouthed, finger-pointing, blaming, and demeaning advocacy will do more harm than good. I was shocked to hear that Amy asked on social media for someone to give her the mayor's phone number at home so she could harass her. I will not support or encourage the support of an organization that thinks that's okay. And I will not support an organization that says F to the churches and F to the Christians because they aren't producing what you think they should. You, you obviously have no idea what the churches in this community do. Shame on you. I don't have the time to list all the things that the churches do, but if you want, you can figure it out yourself. Just do a little research, you'll learn something. Please don't dishonor the work that has been done and continues to be done in our community by individuals, by nonprofits, by churches, and by our local government. Don't dishonor those who work every day, all year, not just during an emergency. Many people suffer the secondary trauma of working out there with people who are desperately in need. We suffer it every day. Don't dishonor us. Don't dishonor the individuals that are working in this community to help people. Don't dishonor our mayor, or our city council, or our government. You're insinuating that Homes Now is the only one out there doing anything. Well, you're not. Let's work together and fix a system that's broken from the top down. Let's not tear it down.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Autumn, and I am a disabled homeless student at Western. And I had a prepared statement ready to read to you all about what a good homeless person I've been, all the things that I've done right, all of the places I've asked for help. I even called and left a message with you, Mayor Linville. I've received no assistance. On Sunday night, I was freezing in my van. I called Opportunity Council, I called the mission, it was refused, received no accommodation. Because of my disability, I'm not able to stay in a shelter environment. Western has offered me no assistance. I'm even registered as a disabled student with Resource Center. They have offered me no help whatsoever. I've been trying to receive assistance since spring. I've been homeless for six months. I've received no help. So yes, there's a lot of misinformation going around. Homes Now, by fundraising through the community, has been the only organization that has offered me any assistance whatsoever. Motel vouchers from the Opportunity Council, I called, I asked about them, I was scoffed at. I need short-term emergency assistance so I don't freeze to death, which the organizations you all have put your faith in would be happy to see me do with no help. They know my situation. I've called and talked to them, I don't know how many times. This is not okay. This is my experience, so if you want to say that there's misinformation going around, that no one's going to be turned away, well, that's not true. I was turned away. You need to offer emergency assistance in these extreme conditions, not just long-term assistance. You need to offer alternatives to the mission because people do not feel safe going there. I do not feel safe going there. For personal reasons, for safety reasons, it doesn't matter what the reasons are if people aren't going to go there and be sheltered. That's what's important. Enough with the politics, this is ridiculous. People are freezing out there. I'm freezing out there, and you guys need to do something about it. Offer better health assistance for the disabled, especially the mentally ill. If you look at the statistics on the Opportunity Council, the majority of the homeless who are disabled have a mental illness. We have no resources. There are a lot of simple solutions to this issue that you guys need to be looking into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three speakers are Richard Taldo, Dan Gentry, and Lynette Allen.
Yeah, just make sure to say your name for the record.
Absolutely, sir. Hi, my name is Richard Taldo, spelled T-A-L-D-O. First of all, I'd like to thank the Bellingham Police Department. Well, I guess I should say that I'm homeless, or not anymore, but I was. So, I'd, I'd like to thank the Bellingham Police Department because they've always offered me the utmost respect when I've been sleeping outdoors. So, I've been homeless with my wife for about two years. I, I began staying away from the drop-in center personally because, because of the bugs. I got MRSA there, I, which was fine, I can deal with that on my own and stuff, but I went in there one time and then, and I saw my wife starting to itch, and that's when I knew that we couldn't be there any longer. Where I could go where she could remotely even feel safe was difficult. But, well, I, I had to do something, and so I ended up getting, you know, getting, or getting allowed into Winter Haven. And, and then, I really, I really believe that, you know, the model, the, the Winter Haven is, is really the, the new, the new model for homelessness because it, it helps to acclimate us from being homeless because there's a lot of things that we, we don't, when you've been out there for a while, like little things from picking up after yourself from things that you have to kind of relearn. And, but, you know, it's, it's good, it's, it's a perfect model to help acclimate you back into society. You know, I think the drop-in center is, is fine for people that want to, you know, get high and, and have a place to, to go and, and hang out and whatnot, you know, but, but for people that, you know, want something better, then I really feel that Homes Now is the new model for that. And I guess that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lynette Allen. I've been here as an activist for 40 years, 41 years, and now I'm a volunteer with Homes Now. And I just want to say thank you to Homes Now and Showers Now for going out and saving people, going through the streets at night, all night long, making sure they have hot water bottles and blankets and rides to the shelters if they want them and if the shelter will take them. It's just amazing how many volunteers have stepped up from this community to help them. And it's amazing to me how the community is responding and being flexible and adding some more services and helping out. So, I want to thank the city for that. But I also noticed that it's just not quite reaching it. It's just severe, and we weren't ready here, and we're still not ready. And there's still people out there about to not make it. And Homes Now and all the volunteers and all the teamwork, it's amazing because I'm on the internet with Messenger, so I know what's going on, and I hear so many people with amazing teamwork to save these people. I just want to thank them all. And, I think we need to organize the system here so that it's better, so that we're more ready for this kind of extreme severe weather and other emergencies. I don't think we even have a clue of what is really needed. I don't think we're planning ahead well enough. I think we're taking a model, kind of a model from the federal government and how they do things, and it trickles down to the states and locally. And I think we ought to be setting our own organizational manner of dealing with these things. There are so many people here who have open hearts and minds and want to help, and a lot of them want to help and they're, they don't want to be, they want to be politically correct and socially correct, but they're there. The churches are full of them. I've been on the churches volunteering to talk with churches and organizations and done many interviews, and there are so many people who are so willing to help, and it's red tape, it's process that stops it or slows it down. So, thank you. Please keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three speakers.
Jim Peterson, Sue Mengi, and Sean Glasgow.
My name's Jim Peterson, president of Homes Now. I'm really exhausted. I've had about six hours sleep since last Sunday. Right now, there'd be more people here, but we have three outreach teams outside right now, driving around in their own vehicles, picking up people. We have two vans that we rented, two 15-passenger vans we rented, that are taking people to the shelter we set up, and it took us a matter of five hours to have it set up and running. I just got word from the pastor at the church we're at, we're about 10 people from capacity. I don't know what to do anymore. I don't know how many times in the last year and nine months I've said, "People will not go to the drop-in center. They would rather freeze to death. We need other options." I'm not saying shut the drop-in center down or it's bad, or the mission's bad, I'm saying we need other options. We've tried. We've tried to get it through to you, but people won't go to the drop-in center. There's a group of people out there that just won't go. They'd rather freeze to death. And I feel like I'm just talking to the walls, nobody's hearing it. It's great, open up another place when the mission fills up, but we need something now for people that won't go to the mission for reasons they've had all their stuff stolen, they've been beat up, they've been sexually harassed there, there's too much drug use, the bugs, whatever else. They won't go. I thank God that our supporters in our community have come together and have raised the money to do that, but I'll tell you right now, I've got 17 residents from Winter Haven and motels until Thursday. We don't have money for after Thursday, and I keep watching the weather forecasts. I don't know what we're going to do, but I will reach out to our donors and I'm sure they'll dig deeper in their pockets. But I'm begging, I'm pleading, open something up tonight, whether the mission's full or not. We've got people out there, we've got two vans out there right now, full of people that need someplace to go. They will not go to the drop-in center. I'll say it one more time, they will not go to the drop-in center. So, I'm begging you, open something up. We've done our best, we found a church, we're hauling them all the way out to Smith Road, and we haul them back in the morning, and then we haul them back the next night, and we haul them back in the morning. We're doing this out of our pocket. So, I'm just begging you, please hear me one more time, there are people that are going to die because they refuse to go to the drop-in center. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Mengi. I'm a resident of Winter Haven. Let me tell you something, I've been denied services by the Opportunity Council. A year ago, I was a victim of domestic violence. My partner choked me out. I was told there was no service, there was no hope. There was no place for me to go to the Opportunity Council. I refused to go to the drop-in center due to the drug use, pedophilia, pedophiles, and sex offenders sleeping next to me. I'm not okay with that. I have social anxiety disorder, so being around people is not okay for me. I couldn't sleep. Homes Now saved my, saved, saved me, my service animal's life. I have a feline that's my service animal. She's not traditional, so most people don't recognize her as that. She's a seizure-alert animal. So, I'm refused access to the drop-in center. They will not take me because of my cat, neither will the mission. The Opportunity Council has flat-out denied me services. They say there's no help, there's no funding, there's no funding. Homes Now got me and my cat off the street, gave us the stability and the grounds to do that, and I go out now and there's not people out there anymore like there was because of what these guys are doing, these folks are doing out there. We are the privileged few here at Winter Haven, that we have people that are taking care of us, and they're trying to take care of more, but we need help. They need funding. They need people that'll be out there, the volunteers to help us with the vans, with the, in the shelters, to be there to staff the shelters. There are many people, I know personally a good 20 people that refuse to go to the drop-in center or have been denied access, denied, told there is no help for them, that they can't get in there, for whatever reason, they won't let them in. It's unacceptable. My friend Casey Jones froze to death two years ago on Samish Way because he was denied, turned away, and he froze to death. I don't, myself personally, don't want to see anybody else freeze. And if we need to help, the city needs to come together and help support Homes Now and groups like them that are out there helping people, not asking questions, not turning people away, because they're not turning people away. We're out there picking up people, I know, Rachel is a good friend of ours, she's out there, they've been out there till 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, all night long, picking up people and looking for people that won't go to the mission and won't go to the shelter for whatever reason such as myself, or they've been turned away from. I don't see that giving the Opportunity Council more funding is going to help anything if they're not going to do anything. You say there's money for motel vouchers, but then you call them up today, my daughter just called them not too long ago because of, my son is homeless right now, and know what they were told? No funding, no help. They can just stay out there on the streets and freeze. That's not okay, that's not acceptable at all. But yet then they come in here and they say how they're helping people. I refuse, I don't see how they're helping anybody when they're telling people there's no funding and there's no help. You know, but yet we are managing to continue Homes Now and Winter, and we're continuing to find help and find funding and get help. find funding and get help. And we're actually out there helping people and saving people's lives. The night that I got accepted to Winter Haven, I took my little cat, I cried. I was on the streets with nothing, sleeping in the post office, getting kicked out of there, getting harassed, had all my stuff taken by Bellingham Police Department because I went to go try to apply to go to school, to get my college degree, to come back to nothing because the police came in and taken everything in the middle of winter. This is not okay. I'm born and raised here. Been resident in Waukem County my whole life. And all I've seen is people pointing fingers and blaming, "Oh, this person's going to help you and this person's going to help you," and you get this runaround. Well, Homes Now is stepping up. And we're saying, "We're going to help." And they are helping. They're actually doing something. They've saved my life and they've helped me put me back on track to get my life together so that I can help and go out and help other people. And I want to just a big thank you to Homes Now and the board and everybody from Homes Now because I would probably be frozen to death today if it wasn't for them taking me in because I won't go to the mission. I won't go to the drop-in center because of I know the people that are there and what's there. And I won't do it. Or if I do try, the couple of times I have tried, like I said, they have refused me because of my feline service animal. It's not okay. We need to do something different.
The next three speakers are Rachel Duval. Joan Jewels.
I think there was another, I think there was one more speaker in that lineup.
I'm Sean Glasgow. I am a resident at Winter Haven. On behalf of Winter Haven, I just want to say about the drop-in. I was recently there and my stay wasn't pleasant. I've had a lot of valuables that were sentimental to me stolen. And due to the fact I got to outreach and was put in Winter Haven, and so far, I've been through a lot of things in my life too. I've lost my wife, my kids, do some poor choices. And I've tried getting help from drop-in with these things and they won't help me. The guy sitting behind me, Jim Peterson, actually took the time to find me a doctor, find me a psychiatrist, find me the mental health that I need to be able to get back on my family. Just a few weeks ago, I was able to talk to my children. You know, that was the most happiest thing. If I hadn't have been with this guy, I wouldn't have had that. I've seen churches in this community that just haven't done a thing for our homeless. I've seen a lot of the homeless people that are out there that have volunteered for themselves to go and try to get people to go and get help at these other homeless shelters besides the drop-in or the fountain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Jewels. And Hans Urchinger Davis.
My name is Rachel Duval, private citizen now, also with Homes Now. I'm here to address the winter shelter issue because it is an issue. I have been a part of that crew that has been relentlessly, the past eight days, volunteering, running people back and forth, trying to make sure that people don't freeze. We have one shelter. I'm not going to put anyone down, but we have one. And they feed off of one other place. That's not enough. That serves one-third of Bellingham. What about everybody else? Like everybody's saying, there are people that won't go to that one spot, you know? We need something else. We need something in place that the citizens of Bellingham should not be the ones out here busting our butts, trying to save people. I thought that was a community effort. I thought that was part of, you know, the city. But the people are doing it right now. It's the people that are doing it and Homes Now members as well. But it's the people doing outreach because we have compassion, we have hearts. Half of us have been in this position. People haven't died because we're there, because we love them, because we're trying. This city needs to do more. We need more of an emergency plan in place where people go out and do what we're doing. Give blankets, give hot water bottles, do something. It is snowing and it is freezing. You're talking about a plan, but the plan is for in the future. What about tonight? We got 10 people left. That's it. What about the rest of them? This is emotional for me because I may have a house, but I haven't been in it for eight days because there is an emergency out there. People are freezing. They're not dying because we're there. What if we stopped? What if we couldn't do it anymore? What is the city of Bellingham going to do?
Am I next?
Joan Jewels.
My name is Hans Urchinger Davis, lifelong resident of Bellingham and Executive Director, Lighthouse Mission Ministries. I feel like I'm up here so much that I'm the Lorax for the homeless. Bad joke. As you know, we're a private entity, a church. We don't get any government money. We do accept pets. We sleep men and women separately. I heard some challenges here tonight. I welcome the desire for increased services. I think grassroots efforts are wonderful. I think it's pretty obvious that we need a new drop-in center, the building, to be able to meet the growing need that we're seeing, and that three-year clock is ticking. I think there needs to be more robust interventions for the medically fragile and the elderly. We need more outpatient addiction recovery. We need more mental health support. But at the end of the day, I know that relationship and trust is everything to the 400 people that we walk alongside every day. I know that many have experienced incredible wounding in their lives, which makes being able to trust again really difficult. But you can't heal emotionally, spiritually, physically, mentally if you're continually told that you can't trust city leadership. You can't trust the hot team. You can't trust the Bellingham Police, the Opportunity Council. You can't trust the mental health professionals. You can't trust the church. You can't trust the hospital. You can't trust the mission whose very purpose is the healing of homelessness. When you hear that day in and day out, you start to believe the lie that no one is trustworthy, that ultimately you don't matter, that you're unlovable. And then everybody feels the repercussions and people stay homeless. Now, nobody's perfect. I'm the first to admit that. I got angry when I heard about all the crazy-making of community members taking my staff from their duties during a critical time. There was even a miscommunication and one person actually got turned away this winter. For the people on the ground where the immediate impact is, you have to be a promoter of trust in the institutions that are in place to help people. It's why we at the mission have so many service providers that we're in partnership with. It's why I'll partner with anybody who's seeking the common good and promoting the value of trust over distrust. I again invite anyone in the council to come down and see the drop-in center in action, talk to the people that are staying there, ask them how they feel, but not when they're sleeping. No midnight tours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three speakers.
The next three speakers are Amy Glasser, Maddie Grur, and Brenda Bentley.
I know this is a little out of order, but this woman has a two-year-old and really wants to say what she needs to and get out of the cold. Can she go before me, please?
Sure, of course.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sarah Bead. This is my son, Gideon. He's got special needs. He's two. We stayed at Agape House for a year. It was a mediocre experience at best. I had some people who I had great relationships with and other people who I didn't. And if Hans wants to talk about trust, there's not a lot of trust there when you tell someone and you open up to them and you say, "I have religious trauma. My pastor, growing up, justified my sexual abuse against my, to my mom and said that because she didn't sleep with him enough, that's why he molested me." So no, I don't trust churches. I told the staff there about this. I said, "I don't believe in God. I don't want anything to do with God. I'm Jewish. I'm an atheist." And still, I got trapped for an hour listening about how I needed to find God again. You know how traumatizing that was? It wasn't fun. It wasn't okay. When someone says, "No," that means no. And when someone says, "This hurts," I'm sorry, you need to believe them. It's not okay. Homes Now, I messaged Amy because the heater in our van went out. I left Agape Home because I did not get an extended stay in May of last year. I've been living in my van with my two-year-old since. I've been to the Opportunity Council. I'm working with a worker there. I've been through three different workers in this time. They're lovely people, but they tell me that there's no help to just keep applying to places, just keep applying. And then I'm told finally on Friday that in fact, there's no voucher available for me if I do apply. So if I applied in a market-rate rent apartment, I can't pay that. I can't. What am I supposed to do? Go and apply to a market-rate apartment? They're going to get me in and then I get evicted? Do you know how much harder it is to get rented to when you've been evicted? I can't do that. Why would I do that? Why would I set myself up for failure? Oh, you're just going to get a job that's going to be able to pay everything. I'm allowed to work for 10 hours a week. I'm disabled. How am I going to afford any market-rate rent at 10 hours a week? Who's paying me $50 an hour? That's what it would take at 10 hours a week. I don't have the training for something like that. There aren't many jobs like that. Homes Now, I messaged them. I said, "Hey, the heater broke on my car. Can you fix it?" And the next thing I knew, they set me and my family up in a motel. What's going on now isn't enough. And it's not enough to tell someone to just find a better job or just get more income. It's not possible always. And I'm tired of sitting on wait lists. I left domestic violence in 2015. I've been homeless since, effectively. I've been in a couple of shelters. I've been through DV-SAS.
Time.
I've been through Agape. Nothing. I'm tired. I'm really tired. Thank you.
Amy Glasser, Bellingham, Washington. 63 had to put them on, 62 has to take them off. I wish to start by saying I'm not representing Homes Now. I'm representing me. I'm sorry. Concerned citizen and a volunteer for a tiny nonprofit. And it appears I'm also representing several people without homes who are too frustrated and traumatized to speak to you directly. If I blather a bit, it's because I'm angry superficially, disappointed, and frustrated under the anger. I want to say that the concerns I'm expressing about the mission are not meant to shut it down. They're being said because of the lack of care being given to hundreds of people that have been passing through the mission doors during this emergency. They can't do it all. Jim said it. We've said it. We've said it for 19 months. The mission has a mission. Wonderful, but the mission isn't for everyone, such as religious-based privileges and prayers. Good for some, but not for all. No running water, pipes frozen for days, no hand-washing stations. And Homes Now is banned from any mission property because we dare to speak to power and say, "Do something." Yes, I did call Miss Linville's home because Hans wasn't available or could not be reached when the mission had no more beds. Lie? Yes. You keep saying there's 30 to 60. Why are people there saying that there's none? I called and I said, "Wake up! Wake up!" I did not swear. I was not threatening. I was demanding, and I continue to. The amount of people that are going through your place every day, 180 to 230 sleeping there, countless others, six porta-potties, no washing stations, no adequate training for your volunteers to judge women's mental status for transport to Fountain Church. I'm not sure how many times the community needs to say it, but the mission is not for everyone. It just isn't. And that's why volunteers are risking their safety and lives to bring folks to a different church that is not preaching. Paidless, countless hours, time, money. As far as I can see, Homes Now donated to finance at least 100 people in motels in this new emergency shelter with no religious requirements for the mat to sleep in on. And the amount of time is astronomical that we've done. Oh, God, I'm running out of time. Each day, the mission executive director says they have space, yet they can't keep stuffing more sardines in a building that's not equipped or safe now. A religious organization does not be in charge of this effort. And Homes Now volunteers are banned. Did I say that? Banned from helping the people we've been helping for millions of times. It can't do it all. The Opportunity Council is wonderful. I love them. I love Northwest Youth Services. Where getting their people? I can't stop. 30,000?
Time.
Okay. If you haven't heard it yet, listen! Please!
I haven't got a formal statement, and I'm not going to speak as eloquently as so many other people have, but I just wanted to come up and say, as a queer person, as a mentally ill person, I wouldn't trust Lighthouse to handle me. I wouldn't go there if I were homeless. I think it's inherently devaluing to queer and trans people to put a religious organization at the forefront and to say that they speak for so many people, especially considering how significantly, like at a higher risk, queer, trans, LGBTQ folks are for being homeless and like the history of trauma that exists there for like so many people with church and with religion in general, something that folks have already been spoken on or have already spoken about. And I just also wanted to point out that accessibility, already said, has been pointed out as a big concern for a lot of shelters. And also what someone said at the beginning, that violent behavior can be a catalyst for being thrown out of a shelter. And I just wanted to point out that a lot of times violent behavior comes from mental illness or comes from trauma. And so to put barriers on shelters in that way, you're further marginalizing people. You're choosing to leave those people out, essentially allowing them to potentially die. So I think it's really, really important to think about where that fear comes from and to think about how we value life, especially when it's homeless folks who are coming for help. And I think that hearing like what Homes Now has done, they're out here saving lives, they're doing so much work. I truly don't know how you could look towards any other organization as the primary caretaker for this community. And I really hope that you choose to support them, and I hope that you do something today so that folks can not freeze to death. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brenda Bentley. I'm a resident of Bellingham City. I feel like you have all had so many opportunities to prove yourselves here as leaders, as problem solvers, as an entity that embraces community dialogue, and you have failed. We shouldn't be here having this discussion now in the middle of a crisis. We know winter comes every year. Is this the kind of infrastructure we have set up? I mean, this is really problematic. And you know, you've failed hugely. You've failed the homeless community hugely. You've failed the undocumented community hugely. It's just not good enough. You need to learn to put your differences aside with organizers that maybe, you know, they don't communicate with you the way that you want them to, or they're not polite. You need to be able to just breach the gap, meet with impacted members of the community, meet with those organizers, and let's start fixing these problems. You know, every minute that you have here, you've got an opportunity to change the way we're interacting with each other. This shouldn't continue like this. It's just not, it has real ramifications for people who are out there on the streets. They're on a quest for their dignity, for their safety, for respect. And here we are. Can you hear the stress in their voices? I can hear people crying. It's just, it's bad. And you know, now, I'm going to shut up because I feel like we should just get out there and people need to get housed, and I hope you're going to help us do that tonight.
Thank you. Next three speakers. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council tonight? Go ahead, sir. State your name for the record.
My name's Dana Briggs. I stood before this council many times. One year and one month ago, I stated, along with a number of other individuals, that something needed to be done to deal with weather emergencies. Weather emergencies are not just snow on the ground where somebody's Mercedes SUV potentially might plow into the might plow into the snowbank. Emergencies on the ground, Ms. Mayor, are sub-freezing temperatures with wind chills down below zero. Among the many other things that I am, I am a graduate of multiple military survival schools. I can take care of myself. Most of the people out there cannot. Since Saturday night, I have been one of the three or four van drivers who have been driving people out to that church facility on Smith Road. We don't turn somebody down because they've got past behavioral problems unless there's a probability that there might be violence that we cannot or the church staff itself cannot handle or the congregation cannot handle. But that's only maybe one or two people that I have run across. We treat them like adults. We treat them like human beings. They're gonna have disagreements. They're gonna, from past relationships or lack of relationship, get in each other's faces. Well, pun intended, we had a come-to-Jesus meeting this morning in that facility, and I told them point-blank, "You have a decision to make." The decision is, is whether you want to be warm and safe with us and something...getting something to eat in the evening and in the morning, and we transport you back during the day, and then back out at night because your behavior has been good, or if you cannot behave, then unfortunately, there's nothing we can do for you. But as someone who swore to defend the Constitution of this country many years ago, which also implies above and beyond anything else, the defense of the vulnerable throughout our society, I am not going to give up on anyone, and I will die before I do that. I'm angry. I'm extraordinarily angry. Not only does something need to be done tonight, but the details about where this came from, why it wasn't handled after all of this time, there's going to be a political come-to-Jesus meeting for all of you and the community in the weeks and months ahead. And if some of you don't like that and you're uncomfortable with it, tough. You have to do what you have to do because you were elected to do it. So by God, do it.
RB Wick, local community business owner. I wanted to thank all of you for doing your job, and I want to thank all the nonprofits that are out there contributing to...help finding solutions to this homeless problem. All of you are adding to the solution. You're part of the solution. You guys are new to the scene, it sounds like, and you're definitely a big part of the solution. It sounds like there are folks that fall through the cracks, and they may be part of the answer to taking care of them. So I don't appreciate their name-calling or looking for the mayor's phone number. It's a little out of line, but maybe they're just trying to get our attention. Hey, there is a need for folks that are falling through the cracks, and they seem to be taking care of them right now, and I'm all for that. And you're saying we need volunteers. Put it out on our Facebook page if we need to. They're there. The community wants to help. We're a very giving, generous community. I'll donate financially if people need help. Let's say they can't volunteer the next day because they need to go buy groceries. I'll buy them a grocery gift card. I'll give you 100 of them if that makes a difference, $150 gift cards. The community is there. The community will answer this call. If there are people out there freezing to death, this community will take care of them. Just ask. We'll do it. I'm serious about that. If we need more volunteers for that, we'll figure it out. You guys don't have all the answers. Some of us citizens do. Don't ever let anybody tell you guys aren't doing a good job. You are. Same thing with the nonprofits. Thank you, and thank you, guys.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Right here.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name's Jennifer Mansfield.
Can you press the little red button on the...thanks.
My name's Jennifer Mansfield, and I'm a long-term resident of Bellingham. I agree with the gentleman that just spoke, what he says. I also think that it is necessary to evaluate what resources we have in the here and now in our city, to see what we can do in the real-time effort we're doing as of this evening to help people that are on the street, whether it's opening the doors of our lobby at the WTA and getting a warming bus going overnight for the duration of this emergency weather situation that we're experiencing. Get our hot teams that are out during the day to pull overnight shifts so they can do triage out on the streets for those who will not come in off the streets. We have tents out there with trees falling on their tents. We are replacing tents. We are placing sleeping bags. We have people that are not in shelters right now in different locations throughout our city that need assistance. Yes, we are mobilizing an immense group of people that are coming forward with donations and helping as a community. I am so impressed by our community. I am also impressed with our city leadership to an extent that they are willing to listen to us speak tonight. I'm begging you to please mobilize every resource we have in this city right now to do everything possible to help the people that are not able to find shelter during this winter season. We need warming centers. We need our police department on board, helping with security for those who have behavioral problems that cannot be admitted to the DIC. We need our groups of people who have vehicles that can go around the city safely in this weather to pick up those who are stranded outside in this storm. I am running off of three hours a night, and I've been doing this since Sunday of last week, and I'm exhausted, and I'm sitting here shaking and begging you to please help us. We need more help. Our church group that's working with us right now is doing so much, and they are burning the midnight oil. They are going 24/7 without sleep. We need more. We need more than what we have in place right now. So please help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Krista Rome. I just want to start off by saying that I agree with 100% with everything that was just said by JC. I'm speaking here tonight as one of the many dozens of average citizens who have put their lives on hold this past week to provide assistance to those experiencing homelessness in our city. What I've seen over the past week from the mayor's office has been much more than just a lack of action. Information has been and continues to be put out to the public by the office that has the potential to further endanger lives. Continued reliance on a missionary organization to provide the only shelter in town, as so many people have already said, when there are so many on the streets who would rather die than return to the proselytizing, unsanitary overcrowding, and sometimes unsafe conditions, is...seems to me a true and blatant negligence on our part as a city. Again, not trying to invalidate the work that's being done there, but trying to lift up everybody who's saying we need more options. And I just want to validate, as a personal witness, most of what you've heard tonight by volunteers who have been working round the clock to provide additional impromptu solutions, I can validate everything that I've heard. I've heard it myself on the streets by the people I've talked to. And the most egregious thing to me, and the reason why I know why Amy was looking for the number in the middle of the night, I was out there on Thursday. I called the drop-in center and mission multiple times. They told me they were full. No room for women, no room for men. They told me the same thing an hour later. They told Rudd Brown an hour later than that the same thing. These people were out there in person, being told the same thing and witnessing people being turned away, one after another being turned away from the door that night. And the staff at the mission told us over and over that, no, there was no plan to notify Hans, and there was no plan for him to notify the city. There was no emergency backup plan for when the mission is full, which is what we have all been told all of this time, that if it fills up, something will be triggered. No calls were being made. The staff also verified that the mission had in fact been full the night before, and he said, "You know, since it was full last night, I'm sure he's doing something about it." Meanwhile, the next day, he reports to the mayor that there were 30 beds open. That was put out by the mayor's office to the public to...actually gives the illusion to the public that there's no problem and there's nothing needed to be done. And I just think that's really, really dangerous. Please listen to the people on the streets doing the work, talking to the people, particularly the unhoused folks who made it out here tonight to tell their stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to address the council? Okay. Let's go up here and state your name for the record.
I am Marcus D. I sometimes volunteer with Homes Now. Right now, I'm just a member of the public, and I have Homes Now support, doing what I've been trying to do, drive homeless people around to the new shelter, the overflow shelter that we had to create that was created by a church independently. I'm furious. I'm furious. This is unacceptable. These are people who are not allowed in the DIC, who are not allowed in the Lighthouse Mission, who are under the presumption that they're banned for life while the official stand from the Lighthouse Mission is that that just doesn't exist. I'm furious. The city doesn't get to wash its hands of this. I've got a van full of people right now out in front. Where would you like me to take them? Where does the action really happen? It all has to happen from volunteers, from our citizens who've already paid their taxes. They have to come in here now and tell you this? Are you kidding me? We were here last year. People were vociferously asking for advocacy, and it didn't happen until spring, when we got four outhouses and four dumpsters. "Thanks for signing the extra check to the SSC which you already had a contract with." That was not effort. That doesn't count. What shall I do with this vanload of people when the shelter, who is...or they're untrained volunteers, is now looking at, "Hey, I'm feeling like we're a little uncomfortable here." So they sit in two of our vans and stay warm tonight, maybe. Maybe. And while we drive around with hot water bottles, hand warmers, blankets, coats, anything we can give these people. I asked you for help. Send me a driver, a van. Nothing. Are you serious? Now, own this shit. I'm out. I got work to do.
Bring him in here. It's the city's fault.
I got a guy with a broken hip in there. He's just got out of...not broken hip, just got out of hip surgery. He's in that van. He...this is what happens. You're out of the ER. I got him.
The city's house.
I got him.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We're gonna take a little break.
I think this one person right there, remember, you had to have a super.
Go ahead. Come up here and state your name, please.
I'll be fast because I don't know what was said before me because I just got in. My name is Debbie Cantrell. I live in Bellingham. I've been out on the street every day for the last 10 days since...or whenever, since the weather went bad on us. And there's...even if there is space in the mission, people are choosing to be in 17-degree weather because they're not comfortable there. I've had stories from women that they've been raped there. They don't want to go there. There's a group of people that live behind the Leopold, under a tarp, behind a bunch of dumpster small totes that they've created a little shelter with because it's next to a heat vent. And I've been bringing them baked potatoes and hand warmers and any wool blankets I can find, and they're very gracious to me, and they thank me, and that's all I can do for them. And I go home at night, and I just cry. It's...these are human beings. They're not...I know there's people with mental health issues, and that's another whole story because they don't have anywhere to go either. But most of these people are just decent people. A lot of them have jobs. Some of them have kids. What if it was your children? They're human beings, and they deserve somebody's respect, and I've never had more people say to me, "I haven't had anybody care about me until today, until you asked me how I was doing." And that's happened to me every day that I've been out on the street. Something needs to happen.
Thank you. Okay. Take a 10-minute break. Come back at...